All right, good evening, everyone. I'm going to call to order the August 19th meeting of the West Sacramento City Council, Redevelopment Successor Agency and Financing Authority. The council's meeting tonight pursuant to the Governor's Executive Order N-2920, pursuant to which the council and staff are participating via live teleconference. To reduce the spread of COVID-19, members of the public have been asked to participate by watching the meeting livestream on either the city's webpage or on WAVE Cable Channel 20 and to submit comments and writing to the city clerk. We have, the comments that have been submitted to the city clerk on all agenda items are posted on the city's website directly next to the video feed for the meeting and where the agenda reports for the council meetings are also being provided. Those comments are not limited to three minutes or limited in time in any way, and they have been provided directly to each member of the council in addition to being provided on the website. So we're going to proceed, the council did not mean closed session this evening, so we're going to proceed directly to item 1A, which is presentation by the public on matters not on the agenda within the jurisdiction of the city council. Madam Clerk, do we have public comments on items that are not on the agenda?
Yes, Mayor, we received a public comment for this item.
All right, and so we just, for practice, to refer members of the council and members of the public to the comments that have been submitted and they're available in PDF to the, on the website. And then again, every member of the council has direct copy of as well. All right, item 1B is council communications. Are there reports or are there communications from the council's official liaison assignments? As they're noted on the agenda page, Mayor Portem, standing.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Belly Clean Energy met on August 13th, and they recognized our contributions and involvement as an associate member, and they accepted, begrudgingly, they accepted our leaving the organization at least for the time being. And they wanted to, for me to convey their gratitude to our council. Earlier tonight, RD900 met, and we approved two encroachment permits. We entered into an operations, maintenance, repair, replacement, and rehabilitation agreement with Wesafka, with the West Sacramento Flood Control Agency in the state. We approved the bidding process for urban pipe crossing video inspection of discharged pipes through levees, and we approved a bidding process for the Drevor property building remodel. We also heard updates on district operations and projects.
All right, thank you. Are there other reports this evening? And I believe if she's not on yet, Councilmember Rosco will be joining us, but appears that not by video this evening. So we're going to proceed then to, oh, let me just also note that, as we mentioned at the last meeting, with respect to the COVID-19 emergency declaration that the Ad Hoc Subcommittee of the Council comprised of myself and the Mayor Portem are providing feedback and guidance to staff between meetings of the council where those items are here, and also to help provide guidance to staff on items that are not council action items and determine when that's necessary. Second is this evening, we're going to ask councilmembers, Councilmember Ledesma and Mayor Portem sending to sort of a similar function with respect to the budget. We have a set of mid-year budget items that are coming forward and other issues to provide staff guidance along the way in anticipation of further council action as well. So with those two, Ad Hoc Committee will continue to work. Okay, we have no item, no appointments under item 1C, so we're going to proceed to item 2, which is a presentation and discussion of the Mayor's Commission on Climate Change Final Report. And as the council is well aware, because we reported on this immediately after the adoption of the commission's report, West Sacramento was proud to participate in this joint effort with the city of Sacramento and with partners from throughout the Sacramento region, but certainly centered in our own two communities. The weather events of this week and recently have only underscored the critical importance for communities all across the planet, but certainly in our, in our own backyard, to, to take account of what actions that we can take to, one, mitigate the impacts of climate change and to adapt, but also to do our best to reduce the severity of climate change and our contribution towards its occurrence in the first place. That requires extraordinarily aggressive and bold action. And we asked a commission comprised of leaders from, a cross-sectoral section of leaders from the private sector, from the civic and nonprofit sector, from government, from academia, from the philanthropic sector, to come together and surface and lift up some of the best ideas that can be undertaken, and then strategies for how to accomplish them. We know this, especially in West Sacramento, we sit at the confluence of the two rivers, and when, when extreme weather patterns caused changes to river flows, we are in grave danger as a result of our position protected by levees. When snowpack and snow melt are unpredictable, our own water supply and our vulnerability to drought, it's also at risk. And those are some, just two of the most direct risks that we face as a community. Even this week, as we opened the cooling centers in our, in our community and throughout the region for what's been an unprecedented extent of extreme heat days, yet another example of the kinds of day-to-day impacts that climate change has in a community like ours. But we also know there's a great deal that cities can do, and we know this in part because of what we have already done here in West Sacramento. I mean, certainly in partnership with the city of Sacramento as well. And so building on those efforts to change land use patterns in profound ways, to shift our energy usage and our energy sources in profound ways, to move our transportation patterns away from single occupancy vehicles to more active transportation, to shared and transportation and transit, the full suite of strategies, none of them are new to West Sacramento. But what we've done, while it's been impressive, has also nowhere near enough. And it is why this commission was convened with the, with the big, but critical role of achieving carbon zero, carbon neutrality. And I want to thank Councilmember Ledesma, who agreed to serve as the council's representative and liaison to the commission. It's been an extraordinary amount of work to, to not just look at ideas and the best science, which the commission has done, but also to engage broadly, to ideate broadly, to hear from, to folks whose voices have not been heard in the past, both for economic justice and also folks who, who have creative ideas that may not have been heard in the normal governmental process. Councilmember Ledesma has devoted an incredible amount of time and energy to this effort that's been equal only by the need for that to happen. Then, of course, also to our, to our staff, and I know Mr. Ledesma was going to mention this as well, our staff team that has been very actively participating in this, in this work. And then finally, I want to thank Mayor Steinberg for his leadership in initiating this effort and his team. And we'll hear from, from the local government commission in a moment. But the local government commission, I just want to call out for really outstanding staff work and leadership on a complex, big, big, difficult project that probably would not have been able to happen without, without the expertise, the safe ground, the trusted partnership, and the big vision of the local government commission. So thanks so much to theirs, to them for their support as well. So with that, I want to turn over to Councilmember Ledesma, the West Sacramento representative on the commission, the city government's representative to the commission for the introduction.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and good evening, everyone. Good to see everybody. Hope everyone's staying safe from that hot, ashy days that we're facing this week and today with the forest fires. And there's really no other unfortunate way that we introduce this item in that context. Unfortunately, I'm sending our best, I think we send our best out to our, to the firefighters and all those public safety officers that are out there trying to protect communities as the fires around us continue, continue. And the hot weather and the spell we're in just remind us again of the importance of this issue. It's a stark reminder, and there's been many events over the past few years invisibly bringing life to this unfortunate issue we have on climate change. But I first want to start by thanking the leadership of Mayor Steinberg, Merka Balden, performing this commission. It was a pleasure to represent West Sacramento, this council, on this commission. I learned plenty from it, and it was not the mayor. I talked about my readiness to be on this commission. Wasn't quite that, but I took it and learned quite a bit from the experts that we heard, that my colleagues on the commission, the leadership and, and our, and from the local government commission and our chair, who's going to speak in a few minutes. It's been, it's been a journey, and the journey must continue. And I think that's why we're here today, is to start to hear in more detail some of the recommendations that are in the climate commission report and the broad amount of feedback we had, not just from West Sacramento, but from our, our friends and neighbors in Sacramento and surrounding areas. This is a regional issue, this is a city issue, this is a global issue. And West Sacramento, I think, is prepared to take it on. We've, we've made great strides, which we'll talk about, I think, probably during the course of this. But this is about listening to other feedback and about listening to the science and about charting a path forward that we know as a city, we're taking actions that are consistent with our colleagues across the river and achieve goals that get us to a place that we are contributing to, the change in our current trajectory on climate change. So before we get started, I do want to thank our city staff, first of all. David Tilly, mostly he's going to speak in a few, probably a little bit on the staff report, but, but thank you to David for staffing this and your counsel during the process, as well as Katie Ansey, who helped as well, also from our staff, and played a big role in this with Susan, Sarah Strand, excuse me, who played a big role on our mobility piece. So thank you all. But there was also some other folks who played a part in this as well in our community. And firstly, was one of our residents, who was also was a commissioner and is the executive director for the Sacramento Quality District, Alberto Ayala, who was in West Sac for a couple of events. Thank you, Alberto, for your leadership to some of our business community and from Rayleigh's, Mike Teal and Chelsea Miner, as well as Jack Ennis from Calsters, played a role in this as well by lending shoes to facilities on a few occasions, which allowed West Sac to host. And members of our community who took part, I saw a lot of faces, met a lot of people from West Sacramento, who showed up at the meetings, reached out to me to provide feedback, took part, took part in the, in the technical committees. People like Chris White, who we all know and love in our community, took part in that, as well as Chelsea Miner, as I mentioned earlier. And to our youth, we were proud to host, as you recall, just over a year ago, a youth summit in, at River City High School with a lot of youth from around the region, but mostly from River City. So thanks to our friends at, first of all, at Washington Unified for hosting that, but the students who showed up and gave us great ideas. There's a lot that we learned from this, and I can't wait to kind of dig into it. Tonight's, tonight is not the night where we're going to debate specific ordinances or policy points or, or that, or a lot of other things. I think we have, we have time for this, but this is when we start that process and start to chart out how we're going to go about doing this. Luckily, West Sacramento has been on a trajectory for some of this. And I think this kind of gives us kind of the turbo boost we need to kind of get into the next, take it to the next level. I think we're going to hear about the climate action plan as part of our vehicle to do that, but I'm sure there'll be one or two other points that West Sacramento must take action on. If we're going to achieve these very, very bold goals and implement strategies, we will need to take some bold action early, and I think we'll hear about some of that, too. So again, thanks, Mayor, for your leadership on this issue. Thanks to everyone who participated. Kate and Ann, looking forward to hearing from you in a few. It's great to see you again. But again, I just want to thank everybody for their work on this.
And with Esther Tilly, you're up next.
Yeah, so good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. As you, as you provided a strong introduction to this item already, so I won't go over that, but I do want to introduce to the commission, to the rest of the council, the Chair of the Mayor's Commission, Anne Stossball, and then also the Executive Director of LGC, Kate Nice. Both of them were front and center at the commission meetings, but also were the ones who really helped orchestrate everything related to this effort, which ran from the fall of 2018, or only wrapped up at the end of June of this year. There was nine meetings, each meeting was three to four hours long. And then there are all the outside technical advisory committees that met on numerous occasions, also that involved people from all walks of life and really literally dozens and dozens of people, most of whom came from, they were not experts necessarily, but they were passionate about this particular topic, and they came to contribute as well. So at this time, I would like to turn over to Anne and Kate for a formal presentation. They have a PowerPoint, unless you have any questions for me at this time.
All right, thanks, David. And just to note, you mentioned some of those folks that participated, but it may come up in the presentation. But I also want to highlight all the young people in our community who participated in several venues, but I know one, you know, one of the commission's major youth outreach events was here, right here at River City High School as well. And great turnout, lots of powerful, profound, challenging ideas and a reminder about what, what this is about, what this is for. So thanks so much. So let's turn over to Anne Stossball and Kate Nice for the, for the presentation. Welcome to both of you.
Great, fantastic. Thank you, and good evening to all of you. I'm Anne, and I had the privilege to serve as Chair of the commission. And Kate's been mentioned several times, Kate Nice. She's Executive Director of the Local Government Commission, which administered and provided invaluable technical expertise to the commission and really was the backbone to this project. So thank you, Mayor and council, for inviting us to make this presentation tonight. The commission completed its work in June, and this is a really an important milestone in shifting from the recommendation stage to implementation. Normally, I'd start with some context about what's happening in our environment, but as the mayor said, the circumstance that we're in really couldn't make the case any more clearly with one of the most prolonged heat waves we've ever had, the wildfires, which are just becoming increasingly more common or raging, and ashes falling from the sky. In the face of these and other challenges posed by the climate crisis, Mayor's Cabalden and Steinberg had the foresight to launch the Climate Change Commission in November 2018. And the mandate they gave us was to develop a set of policy strategies that would lead the two cities to carbon zero by 2045. And the timing of the commission was designed so that our recommendations would come out in time to inform the city's climate action planning efforts. So here on the screen, you see the commission. We had 19 members from a range of sectors, public, nonprofit, community leaders, the business and private sector, and academia. And we were honored to have Councilmember Ledesma as one of our commissioners, and he came to every meeting and was a wonderful member. Our final report was adopted in June unanimously by the full commission. And that's really important because it reflected a very strong cross-sector commitment within the two cities to address climate in a meaningful way. The commission convened three sector-based technical advisory groups. Kate, can you flip to the next slide? We had three, thank you. We had three sector-based technical advisory groups designed to address the city's largest sources of emissions, which are transportation and buildings, and also to address adaptation, community health, and resiliency. Very early in our process, we established equity as a priority, and we also had ongoing input from an equity advisory group. As the mayor and councilmember Ledesma mentioned, we had two youth summits attended by over 200 high school and university students. And we also had very strong public participation at our, in person at our meetings before COVID, and then online. And I think we received over 600 public comments. Next slide. This is the framework for our recommendations. The policy recommendations that Kate will talk about fall within the three areas, the built environment, which includes buildings and land use, mobility, and community health. And of course, one of the things we talked about along the way was that, given the differences between the two cities, SAC and West SAC, most obviously in terms of size and budget, that the cities might differ in how and when and the manner of implementing these strategies. Around these policy strategies, we developed overarching principles on equity and on city governance that are critical to overall success. On equity, the bottom line is that this is critical to success. The commission recommends that the cities prioritize equity in both the planning stages and in implementation. And the goal is to make sure that outcomes are fair and equitable and at the same time, avoid any unintended harm to your marginalized or vulnerable communities. We also recommended a series of foundational principles, which really go in large part to city governance, and they're designed to guide the city's climate planning and implementation efforts. So these include recognizing the urgency of the climate crisis and establishing it as a priority, ensuring accountability by aligning your staffing, planning, and budget with the carbon zero vision, including a strong focus on education, partnerships, and advocacy, both locally and regionally, and finally, using a lens of financial and economic stability. And that would be prioritizing actions that spur economic development and job growth and aligning your capital improvement plans with achieving carbon zero. So with these equity and foundational principles in mind as overarching guidance, I'll turn it over to Kate to brief you on the policy recommendations.
Great, and thanks so much for the opportunity to be here. So the first sector we tackled was transportation, since it is the largest source of greenhouse gas emissions. We recommend that the city adopt a modal hierarchy, prioritizing the largest focus on active transportation first as the healthiest and most efficient option, and then public transit and shared mobility for longer trips, and finally, zero emission vehicles for trips where transit or active transportation is not a viable option. Specifically, we recommend the following targets: to expand and enhance infrastructure for walking and rolling, to expand and improve transit and shared mobility services, and to encourage the adoption of zero emission vehicles. We also recognize that land use decisions have a big impact on greenhouse gas emissions generally, but also on our transportation and our ability to reduce vehicle miles traveled and transportation-related greenhouse gas emission, greenhouse gas emissions. So we recommend that the city support infill that is consistent with the regional sustainable community strategy. We recommend mandating an all-electric, all-electric construction in new low-rise buildings defined as under four stories by 2023 and all buildings by 2026, provided that the costs to go all-electric are cost-effective and the incremental costs are addressed. We recommend transitioning 25% of existing residential and small commercial buildings to all-electric by 2030. We also identified strategies to reduce carbon emissions and achieve public health and climate resilience benefits. So those include expanding green infrastructure, starting first with marginalized communities and tree-deficient neighborhoods, increasing food security and access to healthy and affordable food, and identifying climate vulnerabilities and adaptation strategies. We recognize the city's immediate focus is necessarily on protecting public health and the safety of residents and addressing the severe economic impacts of the pandemic, but we also realize that we can't boost the economy in ways that would lead us into further health and environmental crises. The city has an opportunity now to become more sustainable and to develop resilient jobs and invest in industries of the future and helping our existing industries pivot and, and create in ways that are more sustainable and less polluting. We think it's really important to gain momentum by prioritizing some early projects that can demonstrate the benefits of reducing greenhouse gas emissions. We recommend, as a first order, establishing a senior-level position within the city that regularly reports to the council. We recommend establishing an environmental justice committee. It will be critical, as we discussed quite a bit at our last meeting, to resolve the challenges in electricity service as we think about electrifying buildings and transportation. We recommend investing in green workforce training programs, establishing a food recovery to food security network, supporting telecommuting. We've seen a huge shift, and we would like to see the greenhouse gas emission reduction benefits and associated VMT reduction benefits associated with that telecommuting. And we recommend prioritizing bicycle and pedestrian travel. While we are experiencing significant disruption and devastation, we also have the opportunity, really a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity, to rethink and rebuild our systems and shift how our communities operate moving forward to ensure a more equitable and resilient future. So thank you for your consideration of this critical issue. I certainly hope that, as Councilmember Ledesma says, that this is a turbo boost to the city taking action. So with that, I'll turn it back over to Anne.
Great, thanks, Kate. So just to wrap up, from the commission perspective, as next steps, we would recommend that you consider adoption of these high-level strategies as a framework for your city's climate action planning. And given the urgency of the climate crisis, that you move ahead while the planning's taking place, that you move ahead immediately with the recommended one-year projects as appropriate for your city. Although the commission is formally over, all the commissioners and LGC are eager to support your efforts, and we've developed a strong base of experts and community leaders for you to tap into. Thank you for your leadership. Thank you for allowing us to present tonight, and we very much look forward to working with you.
Well, thank you. Thanks both, both to you, Anne and Kate, for your really diligent and hard work on, on our report that is both bold, but also quite actionable. And action is what is so desperately needed, and so I know, I know the council has heard the general, but the, but this presentation, I know tonight, was really important for us to begin that work. And also your, the timing that you've described, I think, as we, as we update our climate action plan. I know, for me, it's not my intent to wait until we're done updating the plan before we start taking action. We don't, we don't, we have no time to waste. And the COVID situation, as you've described, presents many, many challenges in our community and nationally and globally, but also some moments of opportunity in the way that we think about what's, what's possible. Telecommuting is just one of those examples, for sure, that, you know, we're seeing already from some of our partners in state government, which is a major, you know, the most significant employer in our city is the state government, which has already declared that, you know, a very great agency wants to move to 25, 50, 60, 70% telecommuting, which would have dramatic implications for our transportation system planning and our emissions. It will also have very big implications for our workforce. And the kinds of jobs that, that might be suitable for telecommuting are also themselves changing pretty dramatically. So it isn't, it's not yesterday's telecommuting issue any longer. When we thought, oh, it's okay for bankers and programmers and others to telecommute, attorneys can telecommute, but most people can't. Well, now, many of the jobs that are, some of our partners are describing as suitable for telecommuting are clerical positions, they're administrative positions, they're positions that were not largely suitable for telecommuting before. That has tremendous possibility for a lot of our, our own residents, but it also puts many of them in a challenging position if they don't have sufficient access to broadband, don't have the equipment, don't have the facility segregated from pets and children and other distractions at home that have become such an important issue right now, even in distance learning. And so the, yes, there's an enormous opportunity here to reduce vehicle miles traveled through teleworking, and especially community-based solutions that don't encourage people to say, hey, I can telecommute, therefore now I'm going to move to Placerville and commute to downtown Sacramento. But a local native, West Sacramento set of solutions are necessary to make that, that possible, but also to make it equitable. So that's one example. A second is the rediscovery of our trails and our active transportation system by so many of our residents during the crisis, as they found services and other things that they need close by, and, and people are walking and biking and discovering those options as ways to get around, not just to recreate on a Saturday, but as a principal way of, of moving. And the responses of our And the responses of our services, like Yola Bus, but particularly Via as well, in order to provide shared mobility too. We're seeing a lot of changes in behavior that none of us would have wanted to force, even on ourselves, much less than others. But what we're seeing is that many of us are discovering that there are some good things about giving up a car. There are some good things about teleworking and other options as well. And we've got to figure out how to create the kinds of positive outcomes for our community, for our residents, and equitable outcomes that take advantage of the moment to dramatically reduce those vehicle miles traveled. Later tonight, we're going to have just the latest conforming action moving forward with the largest transit project that the city has ever sponsored and the largest federal investment in transportation that has ever been made in West Sacramento, based on the land use pattern that you described and promoting more sustainable development, compact development that allows our residents, if they choose to, or if they have enough alternatives, to be able to live and work without a car. We have a system like that that's already underway. And so, our continued investments in transit of all forms, rail, bus, Via, and forms of transit that we can't even imagine today are going to be absolutely essential as we go forward. And so, those are just a couple of examples of the kinds of work that's emerged through the work of the commission, where it's an opportunity like there never has been before, and the critical need is there. And then, lastly, you mentioned this, Kate, and I know it was a major effort by Councilmember Ledesma in partnership with other members of the commission around our energy portfolio and our energy provider. And of course, right now, the challenges that are being experienced across California with energy reliability cut across providers. But we in West Sacramento have a especially poor position in the region with respect to rates and investments in infrastructure and the ability to implement some other kinds of projects that are envisioned in the commission's report that we strongly support in our city, but that economics don't quite work without some changes, either in the way that our current electricity provider provides that service or with a change. And so, I want to express my appreciation of the commission and its regional lens, recognizing that challenge and underscoring how important it is that we move forward in solutions in that space as well. So, as Mr. Ledesma mentioned, tonight, we're just hearing the report. As we tune this up each time, we're getting further and further some of these actions. But as I say, even tonight, we'll be beginning some of the implementation work in this area by trying to get to that pyramid change that, Kate, you described in one of the early slides in the mobility pyramid and making, as you said, the largest investment in transit that the city has ever seen, while continuing what has been in the last two years some of the largest investments in the trails and bike lane system that the city has ever seen as well in order to move that forward. Mayor Protem Sandin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And we received quite a bit of public comment on this item. And I know our council members have received that. I wanted to thank the presenters tonight and also thank the mayor and Councilmember Ledesma for their leadership and commitment to this topic and with the work of the commission. The imperative to me for action is clear, and the approach that's outlined with equity front and center certainly challenges us, but the actions are necessary. I think the recent pressure, and Mr. Mayor, you mentioned this, on the electric grid will compel us to think systemically about what it will take to operationalize the recommendations, particularly electrification of new construction. Sorry, I'm mumbling tonight for some reason. I think we'll need to be aware that our goals may be challenging to meet, and we need to rely on outside influences, and we need to work with outside agencies to achieve. However challenging all of this may be, we have to act. We must act, and we must move this forward. And I think, as the mayor's mentioned, we're well positioned. We've already been engaged in this. I think our community is ready. And with the number of comments we've received today, folks want action, and we need to move forward. And again, I want to thank the commission for this work. You've outlined something, the framework. It's doable, and we have to do it.
Thank you. Councilmember Guerrero?
Thank you. I just want to add, you know, a thank you for all the hard work that the Climate Commission has put into developing these recommendations and also help us to identify the priority areas, equity being, I think, an extremely important one, in taking a look at all the outreach and the work you've done to gather how as a region, we can work collaboratively to prioritize this and take a turn from where we were at historically and start looking at where we need to place services and support so that we can all achieve it by looking towards the education component as you're reaching out to residents to making sure that they are all seeing how they can participate, residents and business community and developers here who are putting together plans for the expansion of our city and what they can do to contribute in preparation for that. And looking at how, you know, in getting the residents who probably cannot afford like a solar panel, what we can do as a city to provide that compensation and support. I think it's a priority we should establish so that they are included in the solution and including it in the curriculum as well for educational opportunities in the future so that our youth understand, as you know, the high school outreach to the students, I saw a good number of them who did and very worried about their future, but continuing the dialogue is part of their curriculum and planning and science so they can continue to work. And they're very creative, and I think that they can provide input and ideas. And I think we need to leave room with funding and some support on the commission or any other stakeholder participation activities in the future, just leaving them as part of the inclusion of that process. Also, looking towards what we've done in the past, looking back at what we've done in the past. The city has done a lot of work as we've prepared for entertainment venues, and we established some planning on reducing traffic. And we put bike trails, walking trails, and so that, I think, thinking in advance a while back and also looking at what we've implemented historically, the jump bikes, the scooters, the electric vehicles. And Via just has been all a part of what we see here today in strategizing how to reduce gas emissions. I think the city's done some work on preventing gas emissions and reducing, you know, the car use. So that's, I think, a big step. But also, the goal to go electricity and making sure that we educate our partners in the future so that they can, and we can see what we can do financially to provide that support. So looking forward, you know, I'm going to be also having some points on the next item on the agenda, have a different point of view on the investment of funding, because I see this as a huge component, this proposal. And there's going to be a need to provide revenue for this, a dedicated revenue source. And that's something that, you know, we put a lot of man-hours, we put a lot of time and energy, and I think we need to put some more funding behind it, because I think that's what it's going to take at this point. Thank you very much for all you've done.
Any further comments?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Roscoe.
Yes, just briefly, I just also want to thank staff for all the hard work, and everybody who's participated in bringing this item before us tonight. I mean, clearly, an issue is with public willingness to support limitations on emissions. Oftentimes, you know, people will stand for the idea in theory, but then when it exceeds the intensity of, you know, their ability to mitigate their behaviors or change their behaviors in some way, then the support wanes. To me, climate change is a very serious problem. And just being a member of this council, it's more and more on my radar as I look at the city as one of the five people who are making decisions about our future. I appreciate this council's position, trying to be a leader in this space. It's why I recently, just a few months ago, purchased a climate-friendly car and why I'm teaching my children how to treat our environment. I have a position of strong support for the recommendations and appreciate the council's comments. Everything we do today is for the sake of our children and the future generations of West Sacramentoans to come. So I'm really enthusiastic. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. I think our council has maybe the highest rate of electric vehicles, maybe high prices as well of any of the councils in the region, which would probably, it would definitely surprise the 20-year-ago residents of West Sacramento and Davis. But it reflects sort of the quiet humility around the urgency and the practicality of these kinds of solutions and also what it takes to induce behavior change. And this report, I think, finds a very wise balance between preaching and providing that path that people can say, hey, I want to do something, and here are things I can do, not just as an individual, but also to press on government and on companies and others to do their part as well. And we are not in a moment, like we might have been 15 years ago, where this is a report that's simply going to sort of set a high goal, and we're going to, you know, hope, you know, gosh darn it, we're going to hope we're going to get there, and, you know, let's keep reminding ourselves about it once a year. Let's check in on it, see how we're doing. We are well past that stage with respect to the climate. This is not a moment for, let's have six years of thinking about it or get some more ideas. Yes, we need more ideas and we need more outreach, but mostly, we need real, powerful, profound action. And the commission has provided a roadmap in areas to take that action. I will say, categorically, I favor virtually every recommendation in the report, at least notionally. And I think the burden of proof for me is going to be, as we move forward, why we shouldn't do those things, as opposed to starting each of them from scratch. The commission has done its homework, and they've taken into account both the climate benefits and the costs in doing so. And they've been smart about it. And it's an excellent template for us to be able to take real action. And we heard from, we heard from the students at Washington Unified. We heard from students around our community. They're not waiting for us to educate them. And they're not waiting for us to ask them. They have made it very clear what they expect, what they need to simply imagine a future in which they still are here and that the planet is still here. And it is incumbent on us to take those aggressive actions immediately, big and small. And so, again, thank you to Ann and to Kate and to your colleagues on the commission, especially the Councilmember Ledesma and our staff as well. This is an important milestone evening for the city as we move forward on the plan of action. But it is just meeting number one. And after tonight's transit item, we'll have items up virtually every meeting that are related to the recommendations of the commission or to move forward with real action. So thank you very much for your work. And Councilmember Ledesma, Kate, were you going to say a word before we? Okay, just unmuted.
It's okay, Kate, you can say something.
I was just waiting to thank you all, so sorry.
We just want to say it's music to our ears.
Well, and, Mr. Mayor, thank you. And Kate and Ann, thank you again for presenting today. And it is good to see you again. Unfortunately, this one, not in person. I think the last couple of meetings were not in person, and we'll get back to that time. But one of the things I did want to end with here is, to your point, Mr. Mayor, is that action will be incumbent upon us. This is imperative that we have, and there's no action item today. I think we're hearing a broad affirmation and acceptance of these recommendations, and I'm glad to hear that. And I think for staff, it's kind of, as we start to think about some of the projects we have, we have one, as you noted, a little later in the agenda tonight around our investment in transit. And those are things that now resonate in this context. And we need to firmly place them there so that we do understand the decisions we're making. We understand the impact they will have for better or for worse in regards to climate. And also say this, the other part that we need to take action on is because the bit, no pun intended to our current situation, but kind of the iron's still hot in the fire, right? So we had a broad amount of support in this commission for West Sacramento. Everybody understood that this council has been a leader in areas regarding transit and areas regarding mobility and our growth patterns and in all sorts of ways, including, I want to note, I forgot to note earlier in our finance and sustainability part that Aaron Laurel, City Manager, participated, which, again, we were being pragmatic. We have to pay for this somehow. And I think our participation in that was a nod at kind of who we are as West Sac is. I appreciate Ann, you bringing that part up as part of our new tack was bringing about a tack and how we're going to be able to finance this and buy partnerships. But that's the point, is that we had members from our partners across the way in Sacramento to the university system at Sac State, to SMUD, to our largest private company here in West Sacramento, Rayleigh's, who seconded the motion on the advocacy piece on our energy. There's lots of partnerships, and we're going to need them. And I think we are really going to have to show our best effort that we're going to get after it and take advantage of those partnerships. And I bring up the energy one because it's also on the same night that Mayor Protem Sandin announces that we've officially vacated our position on the Valley Clean Energy JPA. And that was an avenue we thought we could take, and we explored it. But one of the actions I'll ask the mayor to consider is how we take action on that next. And that is, while PG&E forwarded, I appreciate them forwarding a letter of support on electrification, we're going to need a lot more support than that. And the SMUD partnership that I witnessed and as part of this entire effort for the past year and a half is extraordinary. They are proactive, they are a genuine partner with the city and all the stakeholders in Sacramento on how to get to these goals. And frankly, we don't have that today. And that is something we're going to need to take action on. And it will be, again, the outcome could be this better service from our current provider or new service. But we need to take that on because our residents will expect us to do something, and we need partnerships that are going to help us get along the way. So I want to thank Ann and Kate and the rest of the commission for having our back on that one. And we just need to follow through on it. So with that, I want to thank all of you again, and thanks, David, and looking forward to bringing that climate action plan back.
All right, thank you, Mr. Ledesma. Kate, or Kate, was that all you needed to say?
We just wanted to thank you. Your leadership is remarkable, and we really appreciate the support and look forward to partnering with you as we move forward.
Yeah, if I may, your city will really be a model for small cities throughout the state and country, and it's fantastic. And, you know, even though the commission is over, there are many of us who still want to help and support you. So you know how to find us.
Thank you both so much. Very much appreciated inspiring work, and we're going to get right after it. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, that brings us then to the consent agenda, which is items three through seven. Are there items I can send for separate question or comment? Or any item to remove from the consent agenda? All right, then is there a motion on the consent agenda?
I'll move the recommended actions.
I'll second it.
All right, so your consent agenda's been moved and seconded. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes, Councilmember Roscoe.
Aye.
Councilmember Ledesma.
Aye.
Councilmember Guerrero.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Sandin.
Aye.
And Mayor Cabaldin.
Aye. All right, with that motion carries, that brings us to item eight, which is the continued public hearing in consideration of adoption of Resolution 20-55, abandoning a public right-of-way located Tower Bridge Gateway in consideration of adoption of Resolution 20-56, delegating authority to the city manager to execute an exchange agreement between the City of West Sacramento and River One LLC. Nancy?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. I have a brief, very brief presentation just to walk you through some visuals associated with these two items. So if I may share the screen, I will review that presentation. So this evening tonight continues a public hearing. So this evening tonight continues a public hearing that was brought before the council on July 15. And this item was continued because we had not completed our negotiations for the land exchange agreement with the developer. We've since completed that item, and so we are asking the council this evening to conduct the public hearing that was continued to make certain SEQA findings that are necessary since this abandonment that's contemplated by Resolution 20-55 will facilitate a project per SEQA's definition and to also adopt Resolution 20-56. Resolution 20-55 abandons about 4,000 square feet of excess Tower Bridge Gateway right-of-way that the city acquired when SR 275 was abandoned and relinquished to the city in 2000. And this area is in between the trees that you see to the left and that fence line that you see in the back, which is a remnant from SR 275.
And Katie, can I just clarify, on that picture, the arrows are simply a function of the software, right? They're not?
That is correct.
They're not, we are not abandoning the area in the sidewalk.
That is absolutely correct. I borrowed this from Street View. So yes, that's correct. It's the area behind the trees and between the fence. And then Resolution 20-56, this authorizes the city manager to enter into a land exchange agreement and to take other various administrative activities associated with this land exchange agreement that functionally facilitate both a public and private project. And so I just wanted to walk you really quickly through what those items are that we're seeking to swap. The areas in orange are an irrevocable offer of dedication, so we're not taking them now. We're just proposing to sort of bank them in the future for our future uses. A public access easement for a approximately 30-foot-wide path that you see running along the southern boundary of the Ziggurat and as well as additional area to expand our sort of plaza area that we have at that southern entrance point to the River Walk. In exchange for that, the developer from the River One, River One LLC, will be receiving fee title for the area that we're requesting that you abandon with Resolution 20-55. They will also receive a no-build easement that allows for limited public access. And that easement, I should note, goes away if they do not complete their map by November of 2022. It also, we also are exchanging with them a temporary construction easement. This temporary construction easement is designed to facilitate their Phase One project, and it extinguishes in December of 2024. In addition to these swaps that are occurring, this land exchange agreement also clarifies some rights that were granted to the previous property owner in 2010 across the city's property for a curb cut and some improvements to allow the site to have access to Tower Bridge Gateway. When we originally contemplated that, we assumed that we would be looking at the totality of the site when we were setting the location of the curb cut and approving those improvements. As of right now, the developers only presented Phase One, and so we just revised that agreement to account for that. And one of those administrative activities that the city manager would have delegated authority to would be to approve those improvements that they're bringing forward for that curb cut. And then it later dates when certain conditions are met, allow the remaining phases of the project to use that curb cut as well. And just to remind everybody that the private project that we're attempting to facilitate is the River One Mixed-Use Hotel Project. Council adopted Resolution 19-103 approving this through design review because it did require discretionary design review. And there was some discussion about this public walkway that would be occurring upon the northern site, but at the time, it was only being described as a public service easement that was exclusively for fire circulation. And with this action, it would allow it to become a public right-of-way. And that would be facilitating this public access easement. That was first conceptualized in Washington Realized, was further refined in the Washington Art Plan that came before the council last year. And we believe that it's going to be codified through the Washington specific plan update that we anticipate bringing from the council next year. So with that, that concludes my presentation, and I'm available for any questions. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you, Katie. Are there questions for staff at this time? All right, then with that, let's open the public hearing on item eight. Madam Clerk, do we have any public comments on item eight?
Mayor, there are no public comments for this item.
All right, so with that, then we'll close the public hearing and return to the council for any further questions or discussion or for a motion. Councilmember Guerrero?
Just want to say thank you to Katie for, and I think it's a really nice improvement along the riverfront to have that access way for the public. So great work.
I was gonna say the same. Thanks, Katie, and for the work on this project. The staff's been working on this one. This is a long-regarded corner of our city gateway into our city that I think when we incorporate it, in fact, I saw Mr. McGowan not too long ago, who does marvels that this was the corner. This is one of them that they envisioned grand plans for. So thank you for the work you're doing to kind of continue to find a way to make it happen, continue to make it priority, the public access to the riverfront. It's hugely important to us. So thank you for the work, and thank you to the applicant who's putting this in for kind of keeping this moving. And there's no other comment. I'll make the motion.
Second.
All right, so I'm moving to second, and I'll just add a, and this is an extraordinarily challenging development climate, obviously. And it's very encouraging to see this project continue to make progress, both from the development side and of course, on our, as has been said, on our own staff team as well. This is one of the most important pieces of property in the city. Where it sits is an unparalleled location at the gateway and right at the river. And we only get to do projects like this once on a site like this. And so the city has been insistent for generations that there be activated space, that there be places not just to walk by, but to enjoy and to connect the water and bridge to other parts of the city through the network and web of streets and trails and art walks and bike lanes and the passo into the West Capital District. And these modifications that are before us tonight are helped to further that in really important ways and also help to make for a project that is buildable. And this is the twin challenge of any city government is expressing and insisting on a strong vision of what we want to see in our community and also working to make projects economically feasible. And this, what the proposal before us tonight helps to accomplish both objectives, and that really does represent great staff work. And also, I know that the council has taken this issue up in close session many times in order to insist that this kind of access and these sorts of amenities be incorporated in whatever project we're to proceed here. So thanks to the council for its continuing leadership in the spaces. All right, so with that, no further discussion. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll on item eight?
It's me. Councilmember Ladesma.
Aye.
Councilmember Guerrero.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Sandin.
Aye.
Councilmember Orozco.
Aye.
And Mayor Cabaldin.
Aye.
All right, that motion carries, which brings us to item nine, which is a brief workshop presentation on the Draft Bees Lake Habitat Restoration Plan and Design. The Parks Commission held an extensive Parks Recreation and Generational Services Commission held an extensive hearing on this question. And so the item is reinforced, and that is a brief update. Mr. Dirksen? Mr. Dirksen, you are muted.
Sorry about that.
There you go.
Is it possible to just show you a couple of images for my discussion this evening?
Yes, of course.
Thank you. I'm having a little technical difficulty. Can you see that? No?
No.
All right, well, why don't I just carry on?
Paul, if I can make the suggestion, if it's in the report, you could direct him to the page in the report with the map.
I'll speak to it verbally. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Cabaldin and members of the city council. I have Doug Brown on the call from the consultant team to assist with any questions you may have about tonight's presentations. It's my privilege to report to you on the Bees Lake Habitat Restoration Plan. The restoration of Bees Lake was the brainchild of Cindy Tuttle, the former Parks and Recreation Director. The city applied for and received a grant from the Sacramento San Joaquin Delta Conservancy to study, investigate, and develop a habitat restoration plan for 24-acre parcel. Bees Lake is located along the Sacramento River in Southport between both of the marinas. What's included in your agenda report this evening is a culmination of 15 months of investigation, analysis, and design for the Bees Lake property. The consultant team for the projects went through a deliberative process that included development of a baseline report on the ecological values of Bees Lake. They recruited a diverse group of stakeholders that were familiar with the Bees Lake property. We held stakeholder meetings on the conceptual designs and then the evaluations of those designs to actually end up at a preferred alternative. And we held design shreds to elicit contemporary and novel approaches to restoring the undeveloped and riparian woodland. We presented, we had workshops that were presented to the Parks Recreation and Intergenerational Commission, and we received public feedback at those parks that really helped to focus and to direct some of the design. At the last commission meeting, the Parks Recreation and Intergenerational Commission unanimously approved the preferred alternative. It's the least impactful of all the alternatives and requires the least amount of engineering. But they approved that with the understanding that other recreational and design features could be added in the future. So I'm gonna briefly just talk a couple, give you a couple of ideas about what's in the habitat plan and what's envisioned for the design. So first of all, the plan proposes to remove invasive species, plant new trees, new riparian trees, and supporting plants to reinvigorate the habitat values and address potential mitigation requirements as well as improve the water quality of the two water bodies. The habitat restoration and design includes a number of passive recreational features to maintain the ecological values of the site and improve access management. For example, the design plan includes a multi-use trail for pedestrians and equestrians. There are boardwalks and lookouts that are incorporated into the design for hikers, birders, and future students to learn about this unique habitat that's adjacent to the river. The team has also included floating islands as a functional and visually pleasing feature that may be able to help clean up the lakes. To position this project for future funding, the consultant team has already drafted an initial study for SEQA compliance. In conclusion, the Bees Lake Restoration Plan and Design, if implemented, would sustain a natural area in the city adjacent to the Sacramento River for passive recreation. It could provide educational opportunities about riparian forest and habitat and offer respite in a natural setting yet located in an urbanizing environment. The project cost for the restoration design plan is between $3 and $4 million. And we have a meeting scheduled this week to talk about implementation grant for Bees Lake with the Delta Conservancy. Thank you for your time, and we look forward to hearing back any comments you may have on this plan.
All right, thank you, Mr. Dirksen. Are there questions for Paul at this time? All right, and Madam Clerk, do we have any public comments on item nine? Madam Clerk, do we have any comments on item nine?
I'm sorry, Mayor. No, there are no public comments for item nine.
All right. All right, then, back to the council then on the item. Mayor Protem Sandin?
Thank you. I thank you, Paul, for all of your work on this and any projects that involve restoration and habitat proliferation and bringing things kind of back up to nature and getting them restored. So thank you for all your work. I think this is a really important project for the city. And as a city's representative to WSAFCA or WSAFCA as well, I agree with the recommendation of Alternative One, and I'm glad to hear that that had a lot of support from our PRIG Commission. I made that up, sorry. Parks Recreation and Intergenerational Commission. I think Services Commission. I think it makes sense to me fiscally, environmentally, and then with the possibility of funding, and it seems like this is one case where the plan's been written and the funder wants to be spending money on projects like this, and we're making the case for that, I think also temporally if the funding's successful. So I think it does things that we always have to be concerned about, about the variables of cost and of impact and of time. And it provides recreation and habitat. I think this is a beautiful project, a great addition, and I don't have recommendations on any ways to modify it except that I think that having it be possible to make future additions or modifications if there's funding or an interest, I think keeping that open is also great, that there's that possibility there even to do more perhaps. But I think the plan is sound, and I'm supportive of this as it goes forward. I know this is a workshop, so you may hear other ideas as well.
Thanks. Councilmember Ladesma?
No, thank you. I am, too, this is so like exciting really is to kind of think about this Bees Lake, which is many West Sac, longtime West Sac residents. And my, I know my in-laws and others and friends, and they've explored this place. They've already made it sort of a habitat hangout in years past. And it really is sort of a legendary place in the heart of kind of West Sacramento and longtime West Sacramentoans, because it's just, it is a little jewel right on the riverfront of habitat that unfortunately just has gotten neglected and needs some help. And kudos to our former Parks Director, former council member and mayor Cindy Tuttle and bandmate Cindy Tuttle to kind of really led the effort to look at this and look at the opportunity to improve and restore Bees Lake to a really, what it's always meant to be, which is a usable space, a recreational space, a space that is what it's supposed to do, is be a habitat for wildlife in the area that's naturally there on the riverfront. So I applaud the work here to kind of get to this point. I applaud the work of the commission to really come back and say, define an alternative that makes the most sense to us, that's achievable, implementable. And as Mayor Protem Sandin said, something we can build on because I'd rather kind of get to a point where it does become the recreational site we always want it to be. We can go experience it more. It becomes more accessible to all residents. And I think this is just a wonderful project with so much more opportunities in the future. But I really agree with kind of what's built in here, and the ideas that have been forwarded are just terrific. So I just want to say thank you, Paul, for all the work on this. Thanks to the commissioners for their work and their input on this. But this is just really just a heartwarming sort of, there is such a thing in planning and habitat restoration, this one is because of the history of this area. So thank you.
Councilmember Guerrero?
No, thank you. Paul, just want to say thank you very much for all the work that's gone into this. You know, visionary Cindy Tuttle, who's, you know, kept her eye on the prize and saw a jewel in our city, and of course, in many areas of what she's accomplished over the years. And I have had more presentations and more discussions among community members, including my Rotary Club, where we had some time among the equestrian representatives, those who are looking forward to this, and I'm so happy to see that's included. It was a question I got frequently. And also, community members who are interested in sharing like more... opportunities for youth in the habitat and protection. I think that like in the detention basin, there is somebody there who lives and has studied birds and all the habitat that's out there and does tours. So just looking to see if we could put a little place in there for our own residents who want to volunteer and do tours for our youth in schools to come out and, and see what they can learn more from in our backyards. To, you know, just to motivate them to learn how to appreciate nature and protect our, our natural environment. So it's such an opportunity to build on with our local education system and maybe regionally with all, with other schools. I could see a future in that here. But just want to appreciate all the hard work and laying the groundwork so that we could find an opportunity to receive future grant funding and maybe working with other agencies, maybe Yellow County, to partner up in looking for grant funding, because I think that they have a vested interest in projects like this as well. So thank you so much, Paul.
Thank you.
Further comments?
Yeah, I really appreciated the report and also the, the hard work and good work of the, of the Parks Commission as well. They've devoted a lot of time to this, and I see also Councilmember Roscoe has indicated, you know, her gratitude for the, for the hard work on this too, but the commission's work as well. So I, I've, like many West Sacramentoans who boat or camp, I used to be at Sherwood Harbor three times a week, and Bees Lake is, is basically right there, also near the Yacht Club and folks in the, in the land and acres part of the city and the, and the rural residential portions of Southport as well. This has been a staple of, of the community's life for a long time. I think it's probably a stretch to say it was always a dream that it would be a habitat area, right? That, that, you know, for, for a lot of folks, like, what is that over there? What, what's under all that algae? You know, it, it seems a little spooky, right? So what, one of the things I love about this project is an example of sort of the constant renewal that our community goes through, and also the blend of old and new, where, where, you know, newer residents, like, oh my God, what an incredible jewel. And, and, you know, some of us have been here for a while, like, oh yeah, that's a pretty cool thing that we have in our community that is sort of accepted for a long time as being out there. And the work on the levee project helped to focus on this, on this area. The work on the Parks and Recreation Master Plan and on the Trails Master Plan. And so, so it's, it's also an example of a lot of initiatives and projects coming together, not just to make an idea come forward, but to bring the pieces together to make it possible. And it is the combination of the flood protection work and our participation in the Delta Commission and the Delta Conservancy and those other agencies that makes these kind of projects economically and practically possible as well. And of course, that's, that's certainly somewhere where, where Cindy Tuttle always shines, having worked on the Delta as well as on, for our own Parks Department. So I'm excited to see this project happen. It's about time for, for, for Bees Lake. And whether, whether or not we get this first grant in order to bring the project to reality, the plan that's been put together here is going to be very attractive to many, many governments and other grant sources over time. And it's, it's, it's both ambitious and economically modest at the same time, and also allows us to build on it even more later with potentially additional amenities and additional connections that were scoped in some of the other alternatives. But this is an excellent start and a great, a great foundation for, for progress with Bees Lake. So thanks so much. All right, the item is for, is a workshop only. Thank you very much, Paul. So we don't have a motion or an action item on item nine, so we're going to proceed to item 10, which is consideration of adoption of Resolution 20-86, authorizing the city manager to modify and execute Agreement Number One to the Interagency and Cost Reimbursement Agreement and recommend Sacramento City Regional Transit District and its Board of Directors to advance the revised downtown riverfront streetcar project. Mr. McCoy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, a member of council. I hope everyone can hear me all right. The item before you is the result of a series of events that have taken place over the last year and a half. Council may recall that back in February 2019, we had received construction estimates for the original streetcar project that were in excess of the engineer's estimate. As a result, the two mayors directed staff of both cities to work together in a technical working group to come up with alternatives for the original streetcar project and look at various ways of getting across the river and different methods, including a reduced streetcar alignment. The two cities with SMUD, with the Sacramento Air Quality Management District, Congresswoman Matsui's office, the Sacramento Mayor's office, and put together a series of recommendations. The final verdict of that selected by both cities was to move forward with a reduced alignment that would connect Sacramento Valley Station with what is now Sutter Health Park, formerly Rayleigh Field in West Sacramento. This alignment was endorsed by Congresswoman Matsui's office, and the two cities began work over the next year and a half to update the Small Starts Grant Agreement in order to submit to the Federal Transit Administration. So before you right now is a series of actions that staff is looking accomplished in order to move that forward. Resolution 20-86 is City Council to authorize the city manager to modify and execute Amendment Number One to the Interagency and Cost Reimbursement Agreement, as well as to allow the city manager to extend the term of the agreement to June 31st, 2021, and amend the project description for the revised streetcar project. Staff is also asking that the City Council recommend to Sacramento Regional Transit Board of Directors a series of steps to also move the project forward, including amending design contracts to allow modifications to the new alignment for the streetcar, as well as authorization to submit the completed Small Starts Grant application to the FTA. I'm available to answer any questions that City Council has.
And thank you very much, Mr. McCoy. Are there questions for staff at this time? Councilmember Ledesma.
I have questions and comments, so how do you want to work this, Mayor? Just, I can just roll it all into one, and we can just, can you go in a bit?
All right, why don't, why don't we, let's, let's go ahead. Councilmember Ledesma is a representative to the Yellow County Transportation District.
Yes, and part of the streetcar policy. Thank you. Yeah, don't forget it. Don't forget that. Jason, thank you, first of all, for all your hard work on this. I know for you personally, this has been a big challenge to kind of keep working on this as we tried to find a way forward, a path forward on this important transit project. And again, I'll go back to what I said at the beginning of tonight, which is everything we do now is in context of the first outing we had, which is around climate change and the importance of, of that. And then mobility and transit pyramid they talked about, you know, we, we just discussed some of the recreational needs, but active transportation, we, we, we think we've done well, but this is the area where I think we've really excelled in, in, in sort of the transit areas and what we've done with VIA, what we've done with jump bikes, what we've, what we've done, tried to improve our bus service through YOLO Bus, and tried to further this notion of a better transit system. And all towards the goal of finding better mobility options, more consistent mobility options for our, for our residents that are both in, in the city, moving within the city, but also moving across the bridge. And that's been the main imperative, to find the connection point for the streetcar. And this project has been going for a while, and no, no good project doesn't come without a good deal of work and ups and downs and, and, and twists and turns. And this one has had its fair share, no doubt. But where it's at today is, is achievable. And where it's at today, what's proposed, what you proposed to bring forward, what you brought forward, and what was approved unanimously, I think, last night, was the, from Sacramento, was to keep this moving forward. I, I also want to stop and thank, I should have done this first, I'm sorry, Congresswoman Matsui. And it's really, this has been a passion of hers. I know I've worked directly with her on, on streetcar issues in Washington and here, trying to find the path forward. How do we connect YCTD? What's the nexus of how we move forward? And she's, she's just been such a great partner for this, and I think it goes, it, take a moment to think about the work she's put into this, her personal, the political capital to kind of put West Sacramento is a prime project for her, and she's been our congressman now for the past 10 years. She has made this her personal challenge, along with bridges, which we have funding for, along with levees, which have received funding and, and moved forward. I just really want to thank her publicly for the work she's done here and the faith that she's put into West Sacramento, because she, I think she sees where we're going as a city. She, she, she's come to West Sacramento and seen that we deliver on the work we do, on, on, on the promise of, of a riverfront that's an urban district that's higher density. And I think very much she, her, her role in this has been critical. And she knows for the fact, the fact that, you know, getting a project through at the FTA, keeping funding alive, she's worked hard to kind of keep it there. And there's a lot of money at stake here, but it's for a good, the right cause, as we talked about earlier. This is a transit investment that will, for generations to come, provide service for our residents. As we continue to grow, we are the place, we are the city that will continue to grow in, in, in decades to come in Yellow County. And as Sacramento grows, the connections will be important across the river. And we have to start somewhere, and this is it. And I think this is a, a great opportunity for us to move forward. I would have liked having the 4.4, is that right? File track to go around Midtown as the original connector talked about, but this gives us something different. And I know I saw some of the public comment earlier about the, the continued thought about streetcar and what it actually is, because the name is sort of a little misleading, but, but the current configuration, Sutter, where it's proposed, from Sutter Health Park, crossing the bridge up north on Third Street to the, to the Train Depot there in West Sacramento, will also connect it to light rail. And I think that's the promise of this, is that this is not just a streetcar project. This is in essence becoming a light rail extension into West Sacramento. And that's the, to me, is what makes it, gives it a value that's worth pursuing at this point. Because the, the streetcar, from my understanding, and this is, this is the question, Jason, the, the difference between a streetcar, what we were originally talking about, the streetcar, the modern streetcar is not a San Francisco trolley. It's a, it's, it's just a lighter version of, of light rail cars you see throughout the Sacramento. And to a degree, they're almost, they're, they're almost the same now, correct?
That's correct. So the vehicles themselves are largely the same. The, the purpose for us starting the streetcar project was to procure low-floor, predominantly low-floor vehicles for service, so that you could step right off the curb and into the streetcar itself, the vehicle. The light rail system, as it, as it currently stands, has platforms or stairs that you need to step up. So from a curb, you have to step up two or three stairs, or you have to access from a platform for level boarding. That is changing with Sacramento Regional Transit starting to shift their rolling stock to partial low-floor vehicles. So the answer is correct, that it is, it's roughly the same, and that this streetcar line would actually use the same vehicles, the new low-floor vehicles that Sacramento Regional Transit is looking to procure.
Right. And, and I think that's an important point, because I, I think for us, and the feedback I've always had is around streetcars, why get in the fixed rail? Why can't it be a light rail? Well, the sentence becomes the foothold of light rail, a kind of a, of that line here, while still hopefully coming, coming the connector into, into parts of Sacramento. So, and, and for us, for me, as part of YCTD, one of the, the things we've started to do, we started just this year, was started a YCTD, as you know, Jason, our YCTD RT 2x2, because there are so many partnerships being developed now, because we're seeing the benefits of leveraging the larger RT and leveraging resources to better connect our, our county and city from the Causeway Connector we're running now between Sac, the UC Davis Med Center and the campus to some of the work we're doing even on this project and we've done over the years. There's just lots of opportunities for us, and this one came up even our 2x2 last week, and, and it gave the opportunity for RT to ask us questions on, on YCT. How would we, what, what would be the changes or needed areas that YCTD would do? And it's, it's been something we've talked about here at this council before, is that the fixed routes could start feeding those lines and have much more consistent ridership from Southport, from Bright, from wherever to get to, a connector across the river into a light rail streetcar system. So again, I think there's, I think that, that, the, the mindset around this is starting to take hold a little bit, and I think that's, that, that's what we need, because the investment is here. And the federal investment, state investment, our investment, and what our taxpayers have asked us to do is look for transit opportunities. And this is a big one, because we, I'm not sure we're going to get another shot. We've had Congresswoman Matsui working for years to keep this on the front burner. She's focused in, she's done it in a administration that is not of her party, and she still managed to keep it front and center. And I think we need to start focusing on how we, as a city, can start really maximizing. I know we have the Mobility Action Plan going full bore now, and start thinking about those opportunities we have to even extend this in Sacramento to show the FTA we're serious about transit. So I'm, I'm fully supportive of this. One of the items that I know came, has come up, has been an area of concern, or at least an area of confusion for those in RT and even Sacramento, they brought up last night, was our, our involvement in the JPA, which was our vehicle, which we thought 10 years ago would be the vehicle for us to be able to operate and own, who would operate and own that system. And that was at a time when RT wasn't what the agency, it is today as an operator. But again, that was just, the, the JPA was the two cities. America Baldwin and I were on the, on our side, and on the other side were Councilmember Hansen and Harris. And we moved this as forward as far as we could, and the JPA was really no longer necessary. So I know part of what they asked for was to dissolve it. I don't think we have any need for it to continue. If there is, I'm sure you'll, you'll tell me. But I think, and asking that we amend, ask for a motion on this to dissolve, look to dissolve the JPA, and start looking at the operating agreements that we need to get aligned with RT are, is, is the prudent thing to do, to make sure there's total accountability for this project going forward. So those are my comments, and thanks, Jason, again, for your work on this, and appreciate you bringing this forward.
Thank you, Mr. Ledesma. Mayor Protim Sandin. You've also served on the JPA in various capacities, at least for a hot minute.
As, as an alternate. So to me, while the, the project itself is really complex, I, to me, the item before us tonight is really simple. Our voters have supported this project through Measures B and U, and they did that in 2008. The item is not, tonight is not requesting additional budgetary appropriation, and this action keeps the project rolling forward. It's as simple as that.
Thank you, Mayor Protim Sandin. Councilmember Guerrero.
Thank you. I just want to say, we, we spent a lot of time talking about this while I've been on council. And the initial reaction, when I found out, it was early on, on the cost for putting down the rail and, and the cars, was incredible. It was just very expensive, more than we anticipated when we, when this was approved, when the voters approved this in 2008. And the structure on the cost sharing was a little confusing in that some of it would partially come into West Sacramento, but a majority of it would be in Sacramento. And the cost sharing approach has been confusing in that I feel we're, we're bankrolling primarily the cost of this, among, between the two cities and the county of Sacramento that shares a majority of it instead of West Sacramento. And the curtailment of the line back to a small segment of this, much smaller segment of the city. And thinking about where Congresswoman Matsui has done an incredible job helping West Sacramento and Sacramento in various projects, that the bridge- helping West Sacramento and, and Sacramento in various projects, that the bridges, uh, you know, the um flood protection, which is what this was uh connected to. This particular um ballot initiative that was approved was uh taken up um with the plan to protect our levy. And Hurricane Katrina was something that prompted the members of um, you know, the voters of West Sacramento to approve that, you know, along with the streetcar. They were both connected. However, things have changed, not the, not the flood protection, that, that remains a constant. And we is protecting our levy, you know, our levies, making sure they're short up. That is continues to be an extremely important priority as a component of this uh measure that was approved. And I'd like to make sure that we, we stay focused on that. Um, because I think we're a little behind on securing the federal funding for that. But, but we're now going back on track as of this, um, you know, next cycle of funding that will be approved. Uh, looking at where we've been in transportation and where we are now, a lot has changed as far as mobility. And we've done a great job so far in via jump bike, scooters, the electric vehicles, Uber, Lyft, a lot of those things were not around. Um, when the voters were thinking about um having public transportation. And now we have COVID where the um feds are now bankrolling, uh, making sure that we can sustain public transportation because of the significant reduction in uh the, the public transportation utilization. And that causes great concern for me. In addition to that, it's such a short line that I, I find it very doubtful uh that the rest of the city will even benefit from such a project. It is a significant, is significant um amount of money that we're putting into the city. And I think we have a lot of ideas already in place that we could fund and use that funding for similar reasons, um, improving transportation. And I'd like to find something that, you know, I don't, I don't think we could use this, this small starts funding. And I regret that, you know, it's, it's going to have an impact on potentially losing that funding. However, I think we could um redirect our contribution that we're putting in for this into other ideas that would be more beneficial to West Sacramento. And in conversations with West Sacramento residents, I'm getting a sense that they're in, that they are interested in revisiting this particular uh funding source and taking a look at how it can be redirected to something that will be more beneficial that they will utilize. Looking at the climate change uh Commission's report, I think we need to take a look at how we can maximize participation in public transportation. But I don't see that this particular um light rail plan is going to achieve that. And I would like to um, and I, and I don't plan on voting for it tonight. And um, I did send my regrets earlier, tried to contact um Congressman Matsui's office because she um sent a letter to all of us um late last year asking for approval, but we didn't have the specific plan that we have now, which is a significant cut than what was recently proposed. And uh, now that we have this and receiving feedback from um the community members, I uh have a hard time. Um, and I know there are a lot of um working class members of the community who may, you know, aside from telecommuting, who may have to jump on public transportation, and I would like to see them participate in something that benefits them. Um, so with the cost of now um social distancing and um cleaning the operations and maintenance. And my conversation with Councilwoman-elect Katie Valenzuela, who's going to be the new representative of this region. I am, you know, in, in my conversation with her has been that, you know, we, we need to revisit this plan. And uh, we both agree that this will not likely serve a, a majority of the people that will be the high utilizers. And instead, take a look at an option that is going to benefit them. And uh, so um, you know, with that, I've, I've uh had an opportunity to share what, you know, what she has to say, but also agree with her point of view. So just wanted to make sure um, sure her input, who is not a council member at the moment, but she will be during the implementation of this as we move forward um in resubmitting this grant back to the, or request back to the federal, um, the federal FTA.
All right, thank you, Mayor Protem. We have, we have public comments on this item, correct?
That is correct, Mayor. We receive public comments.
And they are available on the website next to this video feed and to the city's agenda reports as well. Uh, and I want to uh thank the folks who have submitted comments on, on this item. Uh, this is uh, project's been a long time in the works, like most major projects in the city. Uh, it's been in the works about the same length as our current massive levy project, for example. Virtually every federal project um involves a decade or more. Uh, that's not, and that's not unusual. Um, in this case, it's certainly no exception. We've uh talked a little bit about the, the, the cost issues and the, and the history of uh this particular um proposal and what the voters um have done as part of that process. And uh, so I recall, so we have the, we have the, the same data that's before, so the council, Mayor Protem Sandin noted this. Um, that the voters in 2008 uh voted on measure B, which was expressly and explicitly and specifically for the streetcar system as well as flood protection uh improvements. It's been said that uh the costs have gone up and that the voters weren't aware of how much they would be spending. And actually, it's quite the opposite. Um, at the time in 2008, uh, the plan was to finance the streetcar system entirely locally, without any federal funds whatsoever. Uh, so the 100% of a cheaper project was going to be paid for uh by local taxpayers. Uh, what has occurred since that time is that, yes, the costs have gone up for construction of the rail lines. Uh, they've gone down for the, for the purchase of the railcars, but they've gone up for their construction of the railcars. And uh, the federal government is committed to cover a, a, a large majority of the cost. Um, and so the, 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 the burden on the local taxpayers for the streetcar system is actually less than we anticipated in 2008. What happened after 2008 was President Obama was elected and made uh the uh implementation of what he called urban circulators a major national priority and encouraged uh communities just like ours to submit applications and proposals for federal funding to support streetcar lines. We answered the call uh from President Obama, like several other cities across the country, uh, and advanced our project and our proposal, along with the city of Sacramento and our regional partners. Uh, and uh ultimately, as is typical in the federal process, several years later, uh, thanks to the tireless advocacy of Congresswoman Matsui, who became our Congresswoman uh after 2008, uh, but saw the potential here and more importantly, heard our pleas. The, she heard the election results and uh the request from the city of West Sacramento, the city of Sacramento to please make this the priority for transportation funding. Uh, we know a city of our size requesting uh 50 or 100 or $200 million is an enormous, is an enormous ask. Uh, and we recognize that we're doing that at the same time we're asking for a billion dollars for levy improvements. And Congressman, Congressman Matsui didn't flinch. She said, that's going to be really hard. Uh, you know, you're up against some of the major metropolitan regions across the country, uh, West Sacramento, but I believe in you. Uh, uh, this river between the two cities brings our region together. And she took up the mantle and made this a priority, and she fought tirelessly in order to get this funding. Um, and we lost many times, uh, and finally we won, thanks to her efforts and to the solid support of our community and to the, to the recognition from the federal government who asked us repeatedly, they said, hey, look, Mayor, uh, many of those other cities that were interested in this, they, you know, we, 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 and what we don't want to see happen is we've gone to other cities like Cleveland or Cincinnati and, and we give them their funding and then at the last minute, they, you know, you know what? We, we don't really want to build this system. And, and the federal government gets left holding the bag. What we want to know, West Sacramento and Sacramento is, are you really committed to this project? If we commit to making an investment in you as the federal government, will you do what you say you will do? Are, are you good for your word, West Sacramento, or not? And we said, yeah, we're good for our word, and we can promise this because our voters themselves voted for this project. Because it's built into every single one of our plans, the general plan, the riverfront master plans, the Washington neighborhood plan. All of our plans are built on the assumption of the streetcar project. Our parking policies are built on the streetcar project. Our affordable housing policies are built on the streetcar project. All of them depend on the execution of this project. So of course, we will not flinch as we get to the finish line. We understand what it is to be a mature government that knows how to get things done, and we know how to be a good partner. Last night at the Sacramento City Council meeting, uh, Mayor Steinberg made this case very clearly as well. Uh, that to be an effective government, you must continue with your promises. You must do what you say you're going to do. You must not stab your partners in the back. And uh, you don't make requests for things that you don't want to do. Uh, that is absolutely essential. What Congresswoman Matsui has said to us in recent weeks isn't, please do this because I got the money. Far from it. She's one of the most humble leaders that our community has been served by. Rather, what Congresswoman Matsui has said is, how can I go back to the federal transit administration and ever ask for money again for West Sacramento and Sacramento? If they agreed to this project, the Congress authorized this project, and at the last moment, you don't do what you say you're going to do. The federal transit agents, uh, uh, transit administration will laugh at our next application if at the last moment, we say, you know what, just kidding. Things have changed. Things always change in a 10-year transportation project. They always change in a 20-year levy project. And the federal government expects us to do what we say we were going to do as part of their commitment to give us the vast majority of the funding for this project. And it isn't just the federal government, it is the state government as well, where we were one of the few regions around the country to win state funding for a streetcar project because the, and the governor's ass, governor's office asked us very directly, are you going to deliver this project? Are you going to do this project? And we said unequivocally, yes. We can't guarantee what happens with all the other funding partners, but we know this. The city of West Sacramento is good for its word, and we know, and our, and our voters have made clear what it is that they expect and what they want by a two to one margin. Now, we've heard comments this evening through the public comments that have been submitted. And I have to say, many of the comments from folks who are opposed to the items tonight were also opponents of measure U back in 2008. They were the same folks who said a streetcar was a bad idea. And I respect that they still believe that that is the case. But the voters of West Sacramento, by a two to one margin in that election, said they believed in the future. They believed in a transportation system that connected our community in West Sacramento, that made it possible for residents of West Sacramento to live without a car if they chose to for the climate, or if they had no choice for socioeconomic reasons. Uh, because voters of West Sacramento wanted a transit system that began uh the, the high class, first class uh transit, transit system um that we've seen in other regions. And even in the Sacramento region with the light rail system, they wanted to extend it to here to West Sacramento. Every transit project of this type starts somewhere. Very few projects are built all, um, all at one time. And this, this starter line is absolutely critical, critical to move forward. Um, and if we don't move it forward, there is no additional three buses that we can run. There's no extra six V O vans that we could buy that would fix what would be in a gaping hole in our affordable housing development projects, each of which has a parking requirement that depends and assumes that there is a streetcar. The project that we heard earlier this evening, River One at the Tower Bridge Gateway in the Sacramento River requires a lower level of parking because the streetcar project is forecast to exist. Without the streetcar project, that project is no longer economically feasible. And so what we're taking up tonight is really a question about whether we're capable of governing, whether we can actually deliver on our promises and do what our residents say they want done. And our residents are, West Sacramentoans are pragmatic people. They understand that it's not about what promises you make today and what promises you make tomorrow. That real progress, real progress takes sustained investment. It's take sustained commitment. It takes sustained leadership over time. That's what tonight's action is about. And so uh, I'm, um, I'm strongly supportive of moving forward with this, with this action tonight. It has been a challenging project, to be sure. Um, no one would acknowledge that more than me, having been involved with it from the very, very beginning with Mayor Fargo uh in Sacramento, three mayors of Sacramento ago. Uh, this has been a, a, a labor of love on behalf of our community. But I think the case has been made very clearly by Councilmember Ladesma about the compelling need for this project for our economy, for our environmental sustainability, and for our residents, that our residents who need us the most for their, for their mobility and for their economic justice uh in our community, that this project must move forward. Um, and in the, in the, in the, in the final analysis, Mayor Protem Sandin is absolutely right. All we are doing tonight is the simple act of doing what we already said that we were going to do and working to bring uh, bring $100 million of investment from the state and federal governments into our community. Money that we cannot spend on anything else. It isn't our money to move to some other project. Uh, and in the absence, we can either have a hundred and $50 million streetcar project that is supported by and financed by our partners in other levels of government. Or maybe we could save a couple million dollars here locally and spend it on something else, one bus, two buses. Is that our, is that our alternative? We're going to spend it on a couple of extra subsidies for something? No, that's not how you make a real government work. That's not how you make real progress happen. I'm very strongly supportive of this. I want to thank Jason also, uh, the, the, the complexity of the staff work on this that's been required. The multi-agency partnerships, the, the nuanced communications between different levels of government. It's been, um, has been masterfully handled by our staff and Jason certainly in the, in the lead of that work. And also Councilmember Ladesma um through YCTD, through as a representative at Yolo Bus and on the Streetcar Policy Committee has been playing a very significant and uh powerful role in making sure that all, all of our partners do the same um and do what they said that they were going to do. Um, and, and, or in order to advance a project that is one of the most important projects transportation-wise in the city's history and certainly moving into its future. All right. So with that, uh, uh, Councilmember Guerrero, I, I can't, since I can't see, I wanted to be sure before we move on it that you didn't wish to be recognized, but I didn't see a raised hand signal. So if you don't put one up, then we'll ask if there is a motion on the item. All right, is, okay, so we've had all the discussion. Councilmember Ladesma?
Yes, I'd like to make the uh, make a motion for the recommended action with the addition of an directing staff to, as I noted earlier, uh, move towards uh, uh, resolving the JPA issue. Um, and uh, and also uh, looking at um aligning our operating agreements or other documentation towards. Um, so that, again, I'm trying to get, make sure the accountability is with RT. So um, if we can move that without amendment.
I'll second that with that addition, those additions.
All right. So is the motion, the second, is the motion clear to members of the council? All right, seeing in front of the, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll on uh the motion on item 10?
Yes, Mayor. Mayor Protem Sandin.
Aye.
Councilmember Orozco.
Aye.
Councilmember Ladesma.
Aye.
Councilmember Guerrero.
No.
And Mayor Cabaldan.
Aye.
All right, that motion carries. Uh, thank you very much and thanks again, Jason. Uh, that's going to bring us then to item 11, our final agenda item, which is consideration of a ward of construction contract to JPP Designs Incorporated for the Fire Station 45 exterior repairs project. Chaplin, Chaplin. Welcome.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. The item before you tonight is to consider awarding a contract for the construction of the Fire Station 45 exterior repairs project. Um, as you know, Fire Station 45 has had a history of leaks and water intrusion. Uh, earlier this, this year, we completed the emergency repair project on the east side of the building and have not experienced any new issues. The contract for consideration, consideration tonight is to address the same types of repairs uh as with the emergency project, but focuses primarily on replacing windows, doors, plaster, and resealing the brick and block uh exterior walls. This contract also includes a full roof replacement as well. Uh, this project is more corrective and preventative in nature than the emergency repairs. Uh, and the um, as the remaining areas don't have as significant signs of active water intrusion a, as the east side, although if not addressed, um, the waterproofing is expected to eventually fail as it did um over on the east side as well. So the, this project went through the required competitive bid process. And after re-review, JPP Designs Incorporated was determined the lowest responsive, responsible bidder. And their bid came in um under the engineer's estimate by about $218,000. Um, staff's recommendation is to award the contract to JPP Designs. Um, this ends my presentation. Um, I'm happy to answer any questions or any follow-up.
All right, Jeremy, thank you very, thanks very much for the report and for the continuing work on the project. And Jeremy also was the lead on the, on the emergency repair project as well, uh, which has been um both, both projects are of critical importance to this, to the city, to the community, to our, our firefighting personnel um, uh, who, who uh deserve and have an expectation of health and safety that, that, that is equivalent to the health and safety that they provide in our community, to our residents. And this is an important, uh, a very important project. And it's encouraging to see the, the bids come in uh within the budget that'll make sure that we're allowed, we're, we are. that'll make sure that we're allowed, we are physically able to do the entire project in order to not just correct the problems that we had before, but also to make sure that we're preventing future issues as well. So appreciate your work on this, Jeremy. Madam Clerk, do we have public comments on item 11?
No, Mayor. We didn't perceive any public comments for item 11.
All right. Thank you. All right. So we'll turn to the council. Councilmember Guerrero?
Yes, thank you. I, Jeremy, I wanted to thank you for the work and doing your due diligence and researching, getting somebody who's, who's going to get the job done right. Looking at the history, enjoying my tour and seeing what contributed to the leaks and then how that expanded. And now we're in the position where we're at now, having to fix up and repair some, you know, some mistakes from the past. And taking the lead and working on that actively and making sure for the health and safety of our firefighters who do a lot every single day, you know, protecting our community. And I'm grateful and I'm sure, you know, all the residents are extremely grateful that we're prioritizing their health and wellbeing so that they can remain strong and, you know, continue to do their, what they love doing for us is protecting our community. So appreciate all the work behind this and look forward to seeing the outcome and maybe touring it again in the future. Or maybe while the work is getting done, if possible, like to establish that so I can see how that's going. Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. It's been an honor working with them. Thank you.
All right. Are there, are there further questions or discussion? Councilmember Orozco?
No, I'm in full support, and I'd like to move the item.
Okay. All right. So it's been moved by Councilmember Orozco and seconded by Mayor Protem Sandin.
I just have one question.
Oh, yeah. Okay. All right.
And then, then I'm happy to second. My question is, this, this action would completely remediate and fix all of the deficits that we're aware of and bring everything back to its expected original condition. Is that, would that be something, like I could describe this action like that?
Yeah. So this, this is the, basically the phase two and, and the final step in everything we've previously discussed. So this would take care of that. It also addresses some of the, some settlement around the, the building through the door thresholds and things like that as well. So.
Thank, thank you for your work on that. And with that, I'll second this motion, the motion, recommended action.
With that, then, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll on item 11?
Yes, Councilmember Guerrero.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Sandin.
Aye.
Councilmember Orozco.
Aye.
Councilmember Ladesma.
Aye.
And Mayor Cabaldin.
Aye. With that, that motion carries. The item is approved. That brings us to, thank you, Jeremy. That brings us to Council Callender, Assistant City Manager Berlin.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. No update tonight.
All right. Thank you. City manager report?
Oh, yeah. It's just a couple of quick updates for you tonight. So number one, you're aware that we have taken the step over the last week to open a cooling center in West Sacramento, given the extreme temperatures we experienced over the last several days. Reporting to you tonight that this is the final night that it was open. We do see a downward trend in the weather. So, so I just wanted to report that. Also, just a quick update on, on the fires that were mentioned earlier. So we have the four fires burning near Lake Bariessa that combined and are now known as the LNU Lightning Complex. The fire started several days ago, but last night it had burned in Yolo County and was threatening structures in Winters and other areas like Vacaville. So Chief Benz is working very closely with our partner agencies and OES to coordinate evacuations in Western Yolo County. And we have other resources assisting with the effort, including our Brush 42 rig that responded to the initial fire in the Winters area. We have several personnel out there, including Battalion Chief Josh Calista, who's a strike team leader, Captain Mark Cole, who's a strike team leader, trainee, among other staff. We anticipate continuing to help with that throughout the week, at least for the rest of this week and probably beyond. Also, just wanted to note that we have had some employees that have been directly affected by the fires, including some who had to evacuate and unfortunately, one who lost her home. So we're, we're making sure that we're trying to support the employees that are affected. We'll continue to do so as the situation proceeds. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Laurel. And I know we're all keeping, all keeping our, both our employees who are experiencing the effects of the fire quite directly, as well as our, as our, as our firefighters who are out there on the front lines in our, in our thousands of persons as well. All right. City attorney report?
Please, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, that's where we're at. Sorry.
I just wanted to extend the thanks to our city manager and staff for that quick response regarding the cooling center. It's one of those situations where, you know, a little bit more, an extensive look and, and response was, was warranted. That day, many people were reaching out, actually the days leading up to the, with the news of the heat wave approaching. And I'm particularly sensitive. I was helping actually a close family member navigate their situation. Specifically, my mother lives in a mobile home park. And every time there's a heat wave, there's always the big threat that the mobile home park will go out of power. It often does. In fact, it did. And she is on an oxygen tank and needs the, the power. I mean, we had a situation where the two of them were sitting in their car for four hours navigating the outage. And there are some folks in our community that don't have that, that benefit. They're not as privileged as to have even a car that they can go to. Our downtown streets team, for example, who has been working tirelessly in our streets, they had to be taken off the streets due to the extreme weather as well. And there are lots of homeless in our community who just, you know, maybe they live in a tent, maybe they don't. They don't have the privilege of being in a place where they can cool themselves. So I do appreciate the responsiveness and I appreciate a lot of members of the community reaching out on behalf of others in their community. There's definitely a time when we are coming out on behalf of our neighbor. It's, it's really hopeful, and I just wanted to make that comment. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Orozco. All right. City attorney report?
Nothing to report today.
All right. Staff direction for members of the council. No future agenda item requests. Does our motion to adjourn?
I'll second.
It's been moved by Mayor Protem Sandin and seconded by Councilmember Orozco that the meeting's adjourned. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Guerrero.
Aye.
Councilmember Ladesma.
Aye.
Councilmember Orozco.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Sandin.
Aye.
And Mayor Cabaldin.
Aye. And with that, the motion carries and the meeting's adjourned. Good night, everyone.
Good night.